Good evening, everyone. I'm going to start with a roll call vote to enter into executive session on this 30th day of April 2025 for reason number two, strategy with respect to non-union negotiations or to conduct collective bargaining sessions with non-union personnel. And reason number three, strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if any open meeting might have a detrimental effect. Collective bargaining may also be conducted, MTA negotiations.
Jen Blum?
Yes.
Courtney Brightman?
Here, yes.
Bob Buck?
Yes.
Belinda Richards?
Yes.
Crystal Ing?
Yes.
Carolina Hernandez?
Yes.
To memory.
Yes.
We're returning to open session.
We are returning to open session. At the table is Director of Finance Jack Higgins, Director of Kierlom Terry Fleming, and Intern Superintendent Dr. Barbara Starkey. If you'd all join me for the culture of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which we stand, one nation under God, and indivisible, with liberty, justice, and tolerance for all. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. Thank you, Lakeham, as always, for being here and recording our meetings. Is there anyone else here tonight that's recording our meeting? Seeing none. So, I want to start by saying, as many of you may have noticed, we have a new look to our agenda. Moving forward, I wanted an agenda that was going to be a little bit more organized and streamlined, and so I asked Dr. Starkey for her recommendations, and this is what we've come up with. Hopefully, it's a little easier for everybody. Going right into public input. To participate in public comment. First of all, there is a sign-up sheet there, so we are asking that you sign up at the sign-up sheet first. To participate in public comment, and if you'd like to review the whole policy, you can do so with the policy link that is hyperlinked. And as always, speakers will be asked to introduce themselves, first and last name to the chair, and state their residence, as well as utilizing the sign-up sheet. Request for public comment can be emailed in advance to the chair, and it gives you my email address, and when called by the chair. I just want to, before I go any further with that part, if anyone is considering making public comment at the meeting, I just want you all to know, you can email me in advance to secure a spot at the podium. And there may be questions that folks have that we can answer without you having to come to the podium and be at a meeting, and so we would like to be able to offer that as a convenience to anybody that would like to utilize that. When called by the chair, the speaker is invited to address the school committee for up to three minutes to present their material, and public comment shall be limited to items that are within the school committee's authority. Is there anyone here tonight for our public input? Go ahead, right up. Please just sign on the sign-in sheet.
Hi. Sorry. Good evening. My name is Rich Shara. I'm a special educator here at Ponquid. So, I'd like to begin my comments by expressing to the school committee and to those representatives from the district, my appreciation for the discussion at the last school committee meeting on an amendment to the proposed budget. I felt that this was a responsible thing to do in order to save jobs and to use available resources to ensure that the students of this district have what they need to succeed and thrive and, you know, have great outcomes. Indeed, cuts to staffing would be devastating to the students and to the staff who are already going above and beyond to ensure the best possible education for our kids. If those cuts were to go through, the impact on students would ensure less quality time with teachers and would most certainly impact their outcomes ultimately for all the children in our district. So, tonight, I'm simply here asking for myself that you all please vote yes on the amended budget, and I appreciate your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Sean McGee. I'm a resident of Freetown. I am a second-grade paraprofessional at Freetown Elementary. I'm here tonight just to quickly share my experience at FES as a paraprofessional, the joys and challenges of the position, and why we still need to address compensation. As a writer and English major, I expected to gravitate toward a high school English teaching position when I embarked on an education career within the district, a district from which I'm a graduate, Ponquid Class of 2001. But as life often does, it took a surprising turn when I found myself substituting more and more at the elementary level. Eventually, I was offered a position as a second-grade paraprofessional. Given my ELA background, I was encouraged by the team to craft a writing program alongside power duties. Over the last four years, I've run two creative writing programs, working with small groups of students of varying levels and abilities, guiding them through the writing process to create poetry and fantasy short stories. In the end, they receive books and posters that include illustrations, and at the end, they also get a chance to build their public speaking confidence by reading to the entire second grade. The program's a joy to me and a joy to the students as well. But this is only half my day. In my mornings, in the mornings before lunch and recess, I push into each of the second grade classes and assist with math, and even if I am more of a letters guy than numbers guy, I enjoy this immensely as well. Guiding students towards the correct strategy, keeping them on task, and building their confidence are all extremely rewarding, as is knowing how much more effective the classroom teacher can be while I'm in the room. Still, these two halves of my regular scheduled day are only half of the job. As with all powers, I may be pulled at any moment to cover a meeting or cover a whole day in a class at any grade level in the building. This is not entirely a burden, however, as it helps us build connections and relationships with the students and keeps the whole ship afloat. On top of all that, we often have recess and/or lunch duty. A big part of our position involves accommodating socialization, stabilizing deregulated students, essentially tier-two social emotional support, or in layman's terms, being there for someone having a rough day. All powers are mentors in one form or another. The job can be very specific or very, very broad, but for almost all of us, we are both, hyper-specialized and always on call for pretty much anything. Every power I know is a jack-of-all-trades and a master of quite a few of them. The broad variety of roles and indispensable nature of the position is not reflected in our wages. Paraprofessionals receive a poverty-level wage. The majority of powers in the district rely on income of a spouse, or a second job, or a third job to make ends meet. I have qualified for SNAP supplemental food benefits and mass health in the past. When I took on summer school to have consistent income throughout the summer, I made just above the amount to qualify for that health insurance and government assistance. The following fall, I turned down the school's health insurance so that I could qualify for that. It would have almost halved my paycheck, so the choice became bills and groceries or healthcare. We often hear how much we are appreciated from administration, parents, and the school committee for as hard as we work, for all the roles we play, for being ready at any time to fill the gaps and keep the ship afloat. Should we even have to be worrying and weighing government assistance at all? I personally don't think so, but as the school board expressed in relation to budget constraints, you have to say no at some point. But where you say no speaks volumes about who you appreciate and who you don't. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGee. Is there anyone else for public input? Seeing none, we will move on to reports and presentations. Mine will go first, and tonight I am looking for a vote in support of the proposed contract adjustment regarding vacation buyback for Director of Finance Jack Higgins and for Operations Director of Finance and Operations Jack Higgins and Director of Student Services Kelly Steele. Can I get a motion? Second. All those in favor? Aye. Oh, discussion, sorry. Discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you. And now we will move on to the student representative repor-- oh, sorry. Now we're moving on to--
You would move to the student representative report, which is next on your agenda, but they're not here with us this evening.
But they're not here with us tonight.
They are very busy students, likely preparing for AP exams, which are coming fast and furiously next week, but you will likely see them at your next school committee meeting.
Bless to them and good luck. All right. And next on the agenda is the intern superintendent's report. Dr. Starkey?
Very good. Thank you so much. I have some reports for you this evening. You have paperwork in your folder, and there's a presentation behind you so that the community can track along. So, my first report is regarding bus safety and railroad crossing. I might call Mr. Higgins for a few examples here. However, since our last report, we are continuing to monitor the situation with our buses, in particular when they're crossing railroad tracks. Now that we have the MBTA coming through town, we are continuing to get calls at the end of the day from First Student reporting to us about how the rides have gone in the morning and the afternoon. First Student bus drivers and administrators attended a safety outing, and again, Mr. Higgins might be able to speak more to that, where our bus drivers rode the MBTA trains. So, I can turn that to you, Mr. Higgins, for a minute.
Sure. So, on April 11th, thanks, really a big thank you to Keolas, to MBTA, to Mass DOT, as well as to First Student for organizing this. This came about as a result of the conversations that were being held after the incident that took place last month, and understanding that the bus drivers would really benefit from having an understanding of what the other side looks at as they're going through those-- by other side, I mean the engineers from the perspective of the train. So, and then in a collaborative format. So, they organize an opportunity for the drivers, the administrators from First Student, as well as administrators from the district. I was a participant, where we met down at the New Bedford Church Street Station. They, we boarded the train, we rode on the front, we didn't ride with the engineer, but we rode in the first car, and we were, they were talking through the horns, they were talking through what's happening in terms of changes in speed, what they're seeing in terms of lights, so that the drivers had an understanding of what the engineers are seeing. The driver's experience prior to this had been freight trains, which are moving much slower, and they're much more infrequent. Then after that, we took, the bus was waiting for us at the Taunton Station, so we had rode through essentially our, you know, affected area on one of the lines. From the Taunton Station, we rode as a group on one of the First Student buses back to the, I'm going to forget the name of this, the crossing, in this particular crossing, was the street?
Brayley.
Brayley, sorry, the Brayley Road Crossing. We went back to the Brayley Road Crossing. This included the drivers, the administrators, the Keolis, safety engineers, and we observed the train passing by from that perspective as well, seeing the timing in terms of when the arms are coming down, when the bell is starting to ring, as well as the drivers sharing their own information relative to, you know, when you are going through the process of pulling up to the stop, opening your door, opening your window, checking. Once you do, once you do that and you have clear, you put your foot down and you go through, because that was a part, that's part of their training, and they wanted to make sure they all understood it, and it was a good piece for them all to be included in that. Then there was followed, and I don't want to go too much into it, but there was followed by a training here at ARHS for the drivers where those safety engineers went through, like a classroom session with them, in terms of the safety pointers that are important for any driver, but certainly for bus drivers.
And the training that took place here was very thorough. It was a great opportunity for our bus drivers to communicate with Mass DOT, to communicate with Keolas, and to communicate with one another. They did some problem solving and set a plan moving forward, and part of that plan is in our next steps here. So, our central office administration will, you know, continue to periodically ride buses for multiple reasons, this being one. We decided to add another front-door bus evacuation drill for this May, and that will include a reminder to the students about their obligation when the bus is coming up to tracks, that they need to be quieter, and they need to be more attentive, and they need to give the bus driver the respect of being quiet on the bus, because that bus driver is now coming up to a train track, and we need to be able to hear, that bus driver needs to hear the signals and everything. So, those drills are coming up this May, so that's an addition, and that was a result of that training. And then we also did some work through Jim Cabusio with our coaches to remind our student athletes, who are often on the bus and celebrating their victories, and they've got the music going, and we're coming up to the track, so to remind them that they also need to be participants in keeping the bus safe. And then we are engaging in student safety trainings at each of the schools between now and the end of the year.
So, I think that's excellent, especially because we do have a lot of young drivers, so this is like a double right now, and some of us adults should be able to take this course with all these trains coming through, but I think that's great, because the students, not only on the bus but driving, can definitely benefit from learning how to navigate around this. That's great. Go ahead.
Jack, when you were on the bus at that particular crossing, what did you think of the visibility?
In that particular crossing, you have visibility only down one way as you come up to where the stop, where the stop point is, and that was a part of the conversation that they've been having with them, understanding, though, that some of that visibility is out of the control of even the train as it's, you know, there's trees and brush that are on private property.
Yeah. Thank you.
Just thank you for making this a priority and as part of the next steps, if that was part of the meeting, including students in the drills and keeping them in the loop is so important, so I appreciate that on many levels.
Any other questions, comments for Dr. Starkey?
Okay, my second report tonight is regarding the bus routes. This, too, is a familiar topic. We're continuing to monitor that situation daily. I have to give a lot of credit here to Terry Fleming, who's still feeling calls from parents and working with Ken Resendis and First Student regarding our afternoon situation. Again, the central office administration is going to continue to ride buses and continue to monitor the routes. As I explained at last meeting, we're working on developing a means of gauging how many students will be riding the bus next year, in particular at the high school level, because we might be making stops that we don't need to make, and if we can truncate those routes, we can certainly save some time and get our elementary students home at a more reasonable hour in the afternoon. We recently had a meeting with Ken Resendis and our three elementary principals where they could talk about what's being seen kind of from all sides of this, and Ken was able to provide some more information to the principals so that when they're addressing parent concerns, you know, you've got more information of why this is happening. And then we're planning on speaking to you in May, if not at the first meeting, at the second meeting, regarding some adjustments to school start times, especially at the secondary level, because by moving our secondary level start times earlier, we'll create opportunities for our younger students, for our buses to be on time for our younger students. So, currently, we're collecting some data on all of our South Coast school start times so that we can see where we might fall within that, working with Ken Resendis, too, to see how much time we would need in the morning, the morning drop-off period, in order to ensure that our elementary students would get picked up at a more reasonable hour at their schools in the afternoon. So, we'd like to keep you posted on that matter. Any questions?
Any questions about that?
All right. Thank you.
You look forward to that update.
All right. Move right along. We have a PTO donation tonight that we are looking for a vote on. So, the Grace PTO voted to donate $1,000 to replace percussion instruments for fourth and fifth grade general music students. Renee, if you'd like to click on the link there, it gives you just an idea of the tentative purchases, and this list was compiled, you know, just so that you can see what they might be buying. But again, it's percussion instruments for grades four and five students. So, we'll be looking for some kind of motion for you to accept the PTA's donation.
We'll accept.
Second. Hey, I heard a motion and a second. Do we need a roll call vote for this? Okay, any discussion? Okay, so, all those in favor, say aye. Those of stay opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you very much, and thank you for the donation.
I will let Principal Sullivan know, and I would expect, much like Principal--
Thank you.
Much like Principal Desert, I'm sure there'll be a thank you heading in the direction of the PTO.
All right. Awesome. Thank you.
And then my concluding report from my portion this evening is just an update on my entry plan, which I presented last meeting. I'm really pleased to sit here and say that, you know, day 16, I think it is, day 17 on the job.
I love that you're counting.
I feel a sense of accomplishment. Thank you very much. But I've continued to meet with a number of people, both constituencies, you know, here on ground with us, like Mr. Cabusio, who I know quite well, and Lisa Pacico and Diane Zapiga, hearing about our programs that we have running in the district and what we can do to keep those programs running and keep our excellence going, and if there are any things that need to be addressed, right, keeping a tally here, so I'm forming, formulating our needs so I can come back to you and talk about a good direction for us to move in terms of the town. I've met with our town administrators in both Freetown and Lakeville, I've met with our fire chiefs in both towns, I've met with our police chiefs in both towns, and I have meetings on the calendar with select board members from both towns. I met with Mr. Plunkett today, who I can see right behind us. That was a very pleasant meeting today. And I've also continued to attend events here in the district. The senior breakfast that was held over at the Plumb's Building was excellent. Our students were wonderful ambassadors to our senior citizens who came for free breakfast, and that was great. I engaged, as I told you, in the First Student Driver Training that was held here on campus, and I really had the awesome privilege of attending the SEC All-Star banquet, the All-Star banquet, which was something I had done as a principal, but our students here at Ponquid are wonderful. Our top five students conducted themselves very well at this luncheon, and it was an opportunity for their accolades, which represent the good work of all of us here in the district, to be shared across the South Coast. So, that was a good opportunity, again, to see how successful our students are being academically, socially, and civically. Bearing in mind that the students, who are our top five students, are really easy to get their accolades, right? So, my intention moving along is to meet with some of our students who don't always get the spotlight, and those opportunities are coming up. And I'm also very happy to share with you that I'm starting to get into classrooms and see what's happening here in the district. This Friday, I'm spending my day at FES. Some of the teachers are probably here. We're going to, we're going to do some reading in kindergarten and some reading in first grade, and I'm making way through FES, and then I'll head over to AES in the weeks to come. I have a lofty goal of trying to get into every classroom by the end of the school year. I can't make a promise, but I can make a goal, right? So, that's where we're headed. I want to thank those teachers of Freetown who were very receptive to my business. So, I'm looking forward to presenting you with some evaluative goals coming up in the very near future based on all of this work.
Great. And I would like to take a minute to thank the middle school students. This is the first senior breakfast I did not attend, and I was so bummed out about it, but Bobo here informs me that the students put tablecloths on the tables and really made our seniors feel special. So, I just want to thank the middle schools, because that was great. This was only the second senior breakfast that they've been involved, and they've done a great job. I was there for the first, and it was fantastic to watch them interact. I really am sad that I missed this one, because I heard it was quite an upgrade.
It's really more than breakfast. It's a social opportunity for a lot of them.
I've learned a lot about gardening at senior breakfasts. So, I did want to send a very heartfelt thank you to the middle school, because the middle school students, because they did a great job, and I appreciate their caring and their taking their time to sit with our seniors and check, because it's always fun.
Awesome. And I just would like to close by acknowledging the beautiful artwork that's up here in this room tonight, right? So, we'd like to specifically identify Krista Lima, Lisa Fitera, and Moira Irwin, who are the art teachers here at the high school. These products were put up by, are products from their students, but they're also products of our art program across the district, right? So, if you have an opportunity tonight to take a glance around the room before you leave, I'm sure you'll like what you see. I don't know the exact date of our official art show. I'm guessing it's very--
Thursday.
Thursday. There you go, Thursday of this week.
I wish items would be on sale afterwards, because I've seen quite a few things that I would love to take home.
I agree.
Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, well, I just, I came really to walk around and to see the artwork. It's amazing.
Yeah.
Really is amazing. The talent that some of these people have, and obviously, the instructors that are involved in it, I mean, it could be in the God of the Museum almost, you know? Just amazing. So, I encourage anybody to walk around and look at it. It's really, really impressive.
Thank you. And with that, I would like to turn things over to Terry Fleming.
Okay. So, just quickly, we put in for, in January, we had a situation where FES was not able to open on a school day, and so we put in for a waiver with the state, and we've officially been approved for that waiver, so FES will be operating under 179 days school year this year. So, that was approved, and we are thankful for that. We have an agreement and communication with staff to make up that day over time versus having to come in on a separate day, so I think that was amiable to all parties. And then on April 15th, Dr. Starkey and Mr. Ward sent out communication to families, and you have a copy of that in your packet. So, that closes the loop on that January situation, and I just wanted to make sure that you knew where we were, and if you had any questions, I'm happy to answer them for you.
Do you have any questions for Terry? Okay. Moving right along.
Moving right along to our presentation from Jack Higgins.
Okay. So, the first item under Finance and Facilities Update is relative to the substitute pay topic, which we have discussed several times over the past few months, and we, I think this has been a very helpful process in terms of fact-finding and identifying what kind of substitute pay rates there are in our area. We, at the April 9th meeting, recommendations were made by this office for increases, however, and you can see those recommendations as they were presented to you at the last meeting. However, as we continue to progress through this budget process and the staff contract negotiations, it is my recommendation at this time that the committee delay the decision for a vote to increase the rates for substitute pay until into the school year, which case we'll have a better clarity in terms of understanding what the additional funding possibilities are from the state, and we'd have a better understanding of where. So, this is something that can happen at any time, where you can change the rates. And while I strongly support the idea of increasing those rates, I think we have enough uncertainty right now, given all the moving parts relative to budget contract negotiations, that including this as another liability, I think, is probably a little too early. For the, I want to thank and wish well to Adrian Ellman, our current payroll specialist. She has been with the district since the spring of 2023. She is leaving tomorrow, is her last day. She had put in for, she resigned a couple of weeks ago. She has, moving on to a payroll position, is very excited about that opportunity. We appreciate her efforts, and we certainly wish her well in the future. To ensure continuity of payroll service, we've been lucky enough to be able to secure Denise Martins. Some of you may remember Denise, who was one of our payroll specialists here in the district for several years, going back in the 2010s and prior, and Denise was willing to come in and fill in that role for the two months to close out the school year for us, which is going to be very helpful. She's got a wealth of knowledge, and will be, it will make things very, you know, she's starting on May 5th, so there's going to be no break in service in terms of our payroll needs. And then I would like you to welcome Lisa Craig as our new payroll specialist, as we posted that position. Lisa has been in the district for 16 years as a secretary in multiple positions in the, at the high school. Lisa has some payroll experience from previous positions. She's also one of the most organized and best-prepared people that I think you could see. She certainly wowed us in the interview, and we are very excited. I can tell you that we, a sign of how lucky we are to have gotten Lisa to join us is that the number of stairs, the ugly stairs that I'm getting from the staff at the high school, understanding that she's coming, she's leaving now, and she's joining us. But they're going to sit, see her go, and we're certainly going to be, we're happy to have her join us, and of course, very, very lucky to keep her in the district. At the April 9th school committee meeting, so moving on to the budget update, the April 9th 2025 school committee meeting, the school committee requested a plan to utilize E and D to mitigate the number of staff reductions that were discussed for the-- We appreciate her efforts, and we certainly wish her well in the future. To ensure continuity of payroll service, we've been lucky enough to be able to secure Denise Martins. Some of you may remember Denise, who was one of our payroll specialists here in the district for several years, going back in the two thousand teens and prior. And Denise was willing to come in and fill in that role for the two months to, to close out the school year for us, which is going to be very helpful. She's got a wealth of knowledge, and will be, it will make things very, you know, she's starting on May fifth, so there's going to be no break in service in terms of our payroll needs. And then I would like you to welcome Lisa Craig as our new payroll specialist, as we posted that position. Lisa has been in the district for sixteen years, as a secretary in multiple positions in the, at the high school. Lisa has some payroll experience from previous positions. She's also one of the most organized and best-prepared people that I think you could see. She certainly wowed us in the interview, and we are very excited. I can tell you that we, a sign of how, how lucky we are to have, to have gotten Lisa to join us is that the number of stares, the ugly stares that I'm getting from the staff at the high school, understanding that she's coming, she's leaving now, and she's joining us. But they're, they're gonna sit, see her go, and we're certainly gonna be, we're happy to have her join us, and of course, very, very lucky to keep her in the district. At the April ninth school committee meeting, so moving on to the budget update, the April ninth, twenty twenty-five school committee meeting, the school committee requested a plan to utilize E and D to mitigate the number of staff reductions that were discussed for the coming year. In that, we, that, for that plan, I'm proposing the use of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of FY twenty-five E and D to keep four positions. This would include three teaching positions and one paraprofessional position. I included the corresponding assessment sheet for your review. There are no, there is no effect to the assessments for the towns of Free Town and Lakeville. While the budget increases by that amount, it is reduced then by the district E and D number as well. So you can see that on line five B, the excess and deficiency applied to operations of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, do we have any questions for Jack on this? Good, thank you for that, Jack. Go ahead.
Just, thank you for, well, a couple of things. Thank you for the thoughtful recommendation and smart recommendation on the substitute pay. I absolutely agree with that. I think we should push that out as far as possible, and also for getting back to us on the amendment language. I think it's an appropriate use of funds at this point in time.
Any other questions?
May I ask a question? Are you looking for us to include a potential vote on the next agenda?
I think procedurally, that's the way to go.
Yeah. Yes, please.
Thank you.
I have some thoughts about this, the budget. So one of my questions is, is a practical matter. What's the, we have school choice funds, we have E and D, E and D, the emergency funds. What's the implication of taking something from E and D versus from the school choice account?
So they are two funds that you have access to. They, either way, you'd be depleting one of those two by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They both effectively are in your, you know, in, in revolving type funds, so they don't go away at the end of the year as a, as the general budget does. So it would be a decision amongst the school committee members to determine which pool of money to draw from. I, I think it's important to note that over the, over during, when we were receiving ESER money from the federal government, the, we were accumulating school choice money as a result of what we receive each year for the number of students that we have that are school choice students. But with that federal money, we didn't end up needing to use it for operations. So it was building up, and I think we, for those of you who were here in, over the last year, that was a topic of conversation, how much school choice money there was. And over the, in the current year, we have seven hundred thousand dollars of that E and D as being utilized for, for the, for operations. And in the current budget, if you'll recall, in the, in the initial assessment, it's the use of eight hundred thousand dollars, and that's still my recommendation. We put four hundred additional thou, four hundred thousand dollars additional dollars in as a placeholder that you, assuming the state comes back and says that we're going to get that money, you're going to vote it back into, you know, out of operations and back into E and D, and we would receive that money from the multiple sources that we've already discussed at, at these meetings. So certainly, if you were to move that four hundred, let's say, back into its pool, you could theoretically draw two fifty instead of using E and D. But ultimately, it's really a decision on where do you want, what, what pool are you deciding to take from? I will say that we are moving towards the place where our school choice funds are starting to, I don't want to use the word dry up, but they, reducing down to the place where we're going to be able to use essentially what we get every year, which that was, which was the common practice, that you use what you, what you're getting, because there's no extra money coming in from, from the federal government. So over the next couple of years, over this year and of the coming year and then the following year, there is going to have to be a decision about moving some of those expenses into the general fund. So it's a timeline, it's a timing issue, but you're making a decision on which, which pool to use.
Right, I think, and well said, I think it was my understanding that an amendment is, is in a safety net, for lack of a better words, because there's still assumptions at the state level that haven't come back to us.
Correct.
That we could offset this, that we're essentially buying ourselves time with the two fifty--
Right.
--to give us a little bit of wiggle room to save the four positions. That's kind of the tool or the resource I saw this amendment as, and then it, it goes back into E and D, given if the state or whatever responds with some funds.
I will say this, if I may, I'm sorry, but the only thing that is in terms of the use of E and D would require a vote in our current fiscal year to you, to then vote it for the FY twenty-six budget. You can't wait until June, into July to make the, to vote that, to vote that usage. So you can vote it now, it gets put to the side, it's there. If ultimately the state money comes in, it then works its way, it just, it slides back into E and D and unused.
Which is exactly why we're doing this. It's a smart use of what that account is for in this, at this point in time. Thank you for that.
I have a question. Do we have any idea on what money we're going to get from the state?
Yes, if you, well, I mean, so if you remember in the meeting, about three meetings ago, we reviewed all the different possibilities. Some of those things have already been voted on. For example, they've already voted to, to increase regional transportation for the current year. We do have a regional transportation stabilization fund, so every one of those dollars that comes into us now, we can, we will place into that fund, and it'll carry over into next year. It can't go past next year. It's not a true revolving fund. It's a stabilization fund in the same way that Circuit Breaker serves as a stabilization fund. In other words, it only has, it expires after a full year. You know, you get it in that year, you have to use it in the following year. So that's one example. There's also the, there, within the vote, now, mind you, this is just the Ways and Means Committee that, that voted and proved it. It still has to go through its process. But that, the other piece to that vote was the increase of out-of-district transportation tuition from the current rate, percentage rate of forty-five percent up to, I believe it was seventy-five percent. So that piece, those two pieces there, they effectively move, and that is, that does have the same rule as out-of-district, I'm sorry, Circuit Breaker. It also carries over to the next year.
What was the percentage rate on transportation?
Up to a hundred percent for the current year. So it's twenty percent additional from what we, what we got from the beginning of the year.
So my next question is then, we, the theory is using E and D as a placeholder, because we think we might get more money back from the Commonwealth. We don't. Then, you know, we don't get that money that we are placeholding. Then we're stuck using E and D, or we take it, I mean--
You could then, if you wanted to, you wanted to then use school choice, you could then use school choice. You can make that decision later, you can make it now, it's, you could vote them back and forth. Once that money's voted in E and D, it literally is sitting there as a, you know, essentially a usable source for you. And then if you don't want to utilize it, and you want to vote to use the school choice, you can do that.
I guess my concern is using, yes, they roll over, and they're, they're fun sitting there, but they're not necessarily going to be replenished every year. So they're limited, and then they're going to be baked into an operating budget. So it feels like we're kicking the can down the road for next year.
But that's, that's my fear, is that we're going to keep, what is it, Robin Peter to pay Paul, kind of like, we're going to take from here, we're going to move it here, we're going to move it here, we're going to have this placeholder, we're going to do this. I, I hate to have a vote where I think could have kind of maybe should have, I mean, it's gone through Ways and Means, but there's no guarantee that it's going to go any further. And that's the part that scares me, that we're going to be, I'll use the word, stuck. We're going to be stuck with this, and we don't get the money, then we're going to have to take the money from here. Then we're going to have to take the money from here to pay this and that. And that's, it's too much uncertainty for me.
It's covering one hole with another one.
Right. Okay, anyone? Go ahead, Bob.
Jack, how much would additional money would it take to have no reductions?
Um, hold on. Between five and six hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. Any more questions for Jack?
Let me, let me restate that. You're saying in total or additional?
Additional.
Well, I'm just going to give you the total number. The total number, if you were to have no reductions, if you remember, there was a reduction in the budget of a million dollars. That was the number, that was through the positions. No positions means from that original budget presentation that you received in February would be add a million dollars. Now, we've added some money in the interim, but that's where we're baked.
Go ahead. Another question. So then, so say we don't get this money, and we have to move everything around. So does this mean next year we're going to be looking at an override? And that's going to put us in an even uglier position? And I don't even know what to say to that, because it's just, because next year in Lakeville is looking quite ugly.
I understand.
And I would only comment with all due respect, I don't think two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is going to drive an override. I think we might be potentially headed in that direction anyway.
Anyway.
But I, I think this as a safety net potentially, I agree, is kicking the can down the road, but we still have options. And it is pretty common that we do, as the process plays out at the state level, money typically does get returned, because it's a great press release to cities and towns. I assume last year we got some additional funds after we voted our budget.
So last year, we received, if you recall, two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars as, from, as additional extraordinary relief for special education out-of-district tuitions.
And then, I don't, I hope, you probably know the answer, but I don't expect you to, but the year before that, there might have been a return, but then you get into those COVID years. So it is pretty likely that--
And quite honestly, budgets right now are, we're comparing apples to oranges, and we're comparing next year's budget, or even this year's budget, with, even this year's budget, because July, August, and September, we still had ESER money that we were, we were spending. So this year still has some of that cushion, whereas next year, we're comparing, we're comparing it to twenty nineteen.
Right. And, and it's obviously a difficult year, a difficult situation, and, and this is, you know, sort of a meat-in-the-middle safety net as presented, and, and hoping we, we can, you know, solve some problems. But you, you, in many ways, you're right, we're creating others, but I think those other problems were coming anyway.
I understand that, but--
But I think we are getting in deeper water.
Right.
Fair point.
There's that fear that, you know, eventually, E and D is going to run out.
Absolutely.
And if we keep taking from E and D to cover things, I think we're going to keep sliding down a very slippery slope of just moving money around and just, I, you know--
Through the chair, I have a question, John. Can, this ball can be made down the road? Can we postpone this?
You will need to make a vote for E and D prior to the end of the current fiscal year.
And are we are creating those four positions, or we are saving?
Saving. There will be no new positions in the budget. That, that is not to say that we won't be hiring people, because positions that might turn over as a result of people who--
Retire.
--move out of the area or change jobs, and those are not positions that we have identified or that are not a part of the whole plan. They need to be replaced. So, you know, at the, you're going to see postings, and you might think, why are we posting if we also are talking about reduction in positions? And that's because those are not the positions, and there's a turnover that's going to happen every year. But they're in places that you, I mean, the simplest way to put it is, we're, we're, we're going to be posting and, and interviewing for an assistant principal at the, at the high school. That's because we have a position that needs to be replaced.
Yes, of course.
Sure.
Thank you.
Is there a ceiling number on your E and D account?
Yes, five percent of your operating budget is how much you can have.
Are we almost at that?
We are at. That is why we were returning money last year to the towns, because once you hit the ceiling, anything over these, over that ceiling gets returned to the towns.
And we're close to that, because I don't remember many times where we voted to try to dip into that fund.
The last time you voted to use, to set aside E and D was in the spring of twenty twenty-three. That ended up being put there as, I think, and I'm just speculating, because I was just, I was, I was in the crowd, that it was, it was a safety net, because I believe at the time, there was some conversation around additional preschool teacher, something along those lines. And so that money was set aside. It ultimately ended up not being utilized for the same reason as we talked before, because at the end of twenty-four, you had, you know, as I said before, ESER III was a substantial amount of money that came coasting to the feds, with not a lot of guidelines in terms of how it could be used. So it could be used in a number of different ways to keep the district operating.
That's good information to know, that we're almost at the ceiling, so--
You're at the ceiling now. The, the next year's ceiling will increase, because the budget will increase, and therefore five percent of that increased number fills up.
Yeah, and I just, I think it extends the conversation, it extends the option, and hopefully we, we, I don't want to call it luck, but we, we get some returns from our, our extra time that we're buying with the, the state budget process. But this, just for procedural, we're not voting tonight.
No.
No, we don't have a vote.
Jack, I can, you must remember when E and D was devastated, it had hardly anything in it.
Yes.
And we built it back.
I believe you brought it down to ninety thousand at one point, is that correct?
That's right. I, I want to point something out to that. That, you can see, if you look at the E and D number over time, you see it go drop down, and, and I remember when it happened, and I remember why it happened. There were positions hired that were not in the budget, and then it took a couple of years to basically increase the budget to the place where it supported those positions, and it was no longer getting E and D. That, it, it slowly grew back, and then there was a big jump, and that jump was FY twenty, when the schools closed on March thirteenth, twenty twenty, and now all of a sudden, you didn't need to keep, turn your lights on, you didn't need to use your, your heating oil. We paid all the, all the staff was paid during that time, but there was a lot of expenses that we weren't expending. And so at the end of that year, there was a chunk of money to be able to be used in E and D, and sure enough, in that year, the E and D rose significantly.
Okay. Any more questions for Jack? Okay, hearing none.
Excellent. We do not have a student services update this evening. Director Steele is not with us, and to the best of my knowledge, we don't have any announcements or correspondence to share with you. So I turn it back over to you, Chair One.
Okay, moving right along to school committee, subcommittee and district committee reports. Let's start with the regional finance committee.
We do not have an update. I know we have a new member on the Lakeville Select Board. I haven't heard from the finance committees who they've appointed yet, so I can reach out to the finance committees.
Great, thank you. How about intern superintendent's evaluation committee?
No update at this time, but thank you for sharing your entry plan. I look forward to your goals as we start the transition. So thank you for that.
Wellness and Health Committee. I don't think we have anything on that.
We have nothing, we have our meeting coming up.
Yep. When is our meeting?
Yeah. I'll be telling you in one second. It's usually Tuesday. June third.
Good, thank you, Renee.
You're welcome.
Moving on to the Policy Committee, Policy Subcommittee, sorry.
No update at this time.
No update. Capital Subcommittee.
I would say no update at this time.
No update.
I don't want to speak for every committee, but--
No update.
Okay.
That's one we definitely don't have an update on.
And the Pool Subcommittee.
Do you want to speak to it, or do you want me to?
You can.
Yeah, we've had a lot of--
Yeah, we've had a lot of, a fair amount of emails have come in, expressed the interest in being part of the pool committee, so thank you for the interest there. Crystal and I have spoken regarding this, we're working to sift through now, um, an appropriate number to be an effective subcommittee, without overbearing the, the community, but not, not too small either. The engineering study is still going to be in process, from what I understand, so that will be part of it, but we will be reaching out to folks in the very near term to, if they're still interested in being on that pool committee, you'll be hearing from us soon, soon.
Thank you, Tim.
Can I just add something very quickly? So, um, my suggestion would be that one of the first meetings that we do a, a trip, uh, and a, a walkthrough of the pool and the facility, I would also suggest that if we're looking at that timeline, we're looking at maybe mid-June, and I only ask that because our director of facilities is right now on leave, when he returns, I'd like him to be a part of that, because his knowledge is significant, and I think we would, I think we would end up just creating questions at that meeting that could have been answered on the spot, and ultimately, we're going to, you know, do it all.
That was my, that was my second suggestion to them, is that get the committee set up, first meeting is at the pool.
Yeah.
Because I think it's a good idea for everybody to see exactly what it is that we're looking at.
Yeah.
Whether we understand it or not, it's a whole different story, but at least we'll know what it looks like.
I think so.
Okay, moving on, is there anything in discussion for our committee? Go ahead.
Only because it was brought to my attention, and I, I don't know if it's part of the policy committee, um, I did receive a couple of inquiries when the agenda was posted this week, that it was a new format, um, and I am not, this is new to me still, so maybe a little clarification, so I can go back to those folks who asked, but, um, changing the agenda, is that something that follows a specific policy on our website? Because I, someone pointed it out, but I wasn't clear, to be honest, so I'd like to be able to just communicate that.
From, from what I know, the chair makes the agenda, and that's me.
Got it.
I didn't do it myself, though, I do give some credit to Dr. Starkey, so, go ahead. And, and you can look at the B E D, B E D H.
Yep.
Policy. I, um, it is posted, and you can take a look at that to see that we have not gone against any policies.
I, I was just going to say, just because I've been on the policy committee, changing the formats, not necessarily, there's no policy change, like the chair and the superintendent have the discretion to set the order on the agenda.
Yeah.
If they're like, you know, just pick an item, but if we were, you'd have to refer something, so if we were changing public participation, you know, some of the rules on there, which we did, and we just kind of linked the policy to it, but as long as the date, time, location, um, is posted, that, that meets the requirements of...
Again, I, I got the questions, and I just want to be able to have the answers, so thank you.
Yeah, so there's no formatting issues, it's...
I would refer them right to our policy, because it is actually quite explanatory right in our, I've gone over it a few times, just to make sure. So, um, yeah, you can refer them to that, because it, it is right, right in our policy, right on our website.
May I through the chair?
Yes, absolutely.
Uh, just, just to tell you where the, the agenda came from, when I met with Chair Blum, and through conversation, we were looking for an agenda that might be more efficient. So, given that I haven't been here very long, I went to an agenda that I was very comfortable with from a former school district, and turned it over to Renee Roderick, who does a bulk of the work in preparing for these meetings, and I said, Renee, you know what's going on here, can you try to meld this agenda with what has been the traditional agenda here? And I did present it to Chair Blum and to Vice Chair Steve Sova, who, who thought it would be appropriate for the meeting, so, you know, it wasn't any intricate design, it was simply what I knew, and it had been efficient in a process that I had engaged in before, in that, you know, the committee reports were delivered in succession, and people didn't have to keep talking over each other, so, that's where it came from.
Thank you.
And, and just as a thank you, you've met the efficiency goal. So these are positive. And we want a serious and productive conversation, so...
Yeah.
The efficiency is, is, you've met that goal, thank you.
I wanted to say, I don't want to be biased, but I do think that this is a pretty efficient round meeting tonight, so...
It's a community effort, right?
That's right.
Um, and I also wanted to add that our intention is to continue to display something for the public to see, right, because it's, it's challenging when you're at home, and you're hearing budget numbers and you can't see them, right? Or you're hearing a discussion about substitute pay, and you're just hearing all these numbers, but at least for the audience at home, and for the people who are sitting here, you have an opportunity to see it. We're working, Margaret French, we are working on, on providing another opportunity on the other side, so that you can see what's going on at the meeting. We're getting there, we're getting there.
And then further, if I could add, I, I think there's an advancement in the way the public participation is presented, because the option to email something and have that read into the record is, is an option that we've talked about in the past to kind of increase that. So it's, it's really encouraging people to participate in the process, so I think it's an added bonus, um, and it's something we would discuss in the past, so, I think it's a good thing.
Yeah.
A good, yeah.
Yeah, again, thank you, I appreciate it.
Yep. Okay, so movement, any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move right on to action items. We did already, we have addressed A and B, which is the vote to approve Mr. Higgins and Ms. Steele's contract amendment, and the vote to approve the PTO donation, so those are all set. Now we will move on to vote to approve the payroll vendor warrants from 416, 2025.
Motion to approve the payroll vendor warrants from 416, 25.
Second.
Hearing a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
I just have a question.
Go for it.
Did we vote out here for the, the agenda?
We did.
I believe you said I.
Yeah, I could have, I could have, I very well could have.
I know you didn't oppose.
No, 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 because I was still thinking about something else. Yeah, we just did that, um, when, when it was presented.
Okay.
So like for, for the first one for Jack and Kelly, we did that as presented, and the second one for the donation, we did that as presented as well.
So my question is, is why are they separate? I guess that's, like, why can't we just have it together?
Um, I'm sorry, I don't understand, why is what separate?
Okay, so, like, under action item is the vote for Mr. Higgins and Ms. Steele's agenda, but then we talk about it here, where it says vote required, why not just have it all together in one spot and get her done?
Well, we did.
Yeah, we, that is what...
Yeah, I know, but we're going back over it as an action item.
Oh, no, we're not, well, yeah, because I, I did the vote at that time, versus come back to it later on at the end of the night and kind of revisit it, so we, we talked about it and we voted at that time, but, yeah, so...
I'm not, I'm not necessarily... No, I just said, put it all together and then just get it done, and then we'd be moving to adjourn, just saying.
Through, through the chair, we asked a question.
Yeah.
Are you suggesting that we not, that the votes not be taken at the top, you take them all at the bottom under action items?
No, just because we did them.
Yep.
But then we go over them again as an action item, but just put them together, and then they're just done, so then we don't have to go back and talk about them again.
I think we were trying to avoid talking about it again, but A and B were already done.
Right, exactly.
So, moving on to C, if we may. I'll entertain a vote to vote, uh, to approve the payroll vendor warrant from 416, 2025.
So we have a motion and a second?
Yeah, I got them, I stepped with all that.
And you had said discussion.
Yeah, so do we have any discussion on that?
We just had it.
Hearing none? Um, all in favor, do we do a roll?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Next, we are going to vote to approve regular session minutes for 429, 2025.
Second.
Hearing a motion and a second, do we have any discussion?
To be clear, this is regular session?
This is regular session, yes, sir.
I think so, but they're sectioned.
Hearing no more, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, now moving on to executive session minutes from 9:25, but to note, we are not releasing until collective bargaining is complete.
Motion to approve or not release the executive session minutes before 9:25.
Second. Courtney?
Second.
Hearing a motion and a second, is there any discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Aye, same.
Motion passes. And now I would like to make an, a motion to adjourn. Okay, good evening, thank you all.